Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. That would take us to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move the ministers of the city council meeting held January 7th, 2013 be adopted.
Thanks, Councillor Crokin. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries and the adoption of the agendas. Next, somebody care to make a motion? Councillor Rice?
I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anyone in the community to come forward to address any community-related matter. We did have advance notice of at least one delegation, Mr. Harold Friesen from the Downtown Association Board. And Harold, come and join us. And while you do, I'll recognize Councillor Rice.
Since Mr. Friesen is my boss, I would like to declare a conflict. Leave the chambers then. Leave Alderman Crokin sitting on this side with all his friends.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Mr. Friesen?
My name is Harold Friesen. I'm the Chair of the Downtown Association. And I'm here to, because we are presenting a change to the bylaw, C-801E. Most of the changes that we're requesting are just minor changes. They're housekeeping more than anything. The more significant change that we're requesting is that the board makeup be changed slightly. And that's in, what we would like to do is have one public member on the board. We feel that this would give us a fresh perspective, keep maybe, maybe a new view from the community on the board. But still having eight downtown members would still keep the power within the Downtown Association.
Great. Thanks very much, Mr. Friesen. And thanks for your presentation at General Government Services when this came forward as well. Any questions for Mr. Friesen? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Harold, I just want to thank you for coming and letting vote. And I think that one initiative about public members sitting on the board is very good. To actually see what Downtown Association is doing and when it comes to parades or flowers. I don't know if the general public realizes just what you put in for bringing all the flowers downtown and that there is a price to that. And so I think a public member could maybe possibly get that out to the public.
Sure.
So I think that's very huge. And exactly, the parades, I mean, if it's Santa Claus or Canada Day, downtown is vital. So I'm glad you're going with public member.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor McLean. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Friesen? Seeing none, thanks very much, Mr. Friesen. We'll deal with that item on the agenda when it comes up.
Thank you for your time.
If we could let Councillor Rice know that Mr. Friesen's finished his presentation. We did have some others who weren't able to be on the printed agenda tonight, but did let us know that they were going to be attending. And the first that I would ask to come up is Dr. Liam McGowan.
Oh, Mr. Mayor and councillors, thanks for this opportunity to speak with you. I think most of you know what this is about. The looming closure of the city center airport in Edmonton has significant negative effects for us in the north. And I'm not being melodramatic when I say people from this area will be harmed and some will die as a result of the movement of the Medevac services from the city center airport down 30 kilometers south of the city into the International. The handout that I've given you details some of what I'd like to talk about. If you look at the two charts that are with you there, you'll notice at the top, now this, this is a study that was commissioned by the Stelmack government, the Health Quality Council of Alberta looked at it. And it's showing transport times from the city center airport initially to the Royal Alec and the University of Alberta Hospital. You can see it's five minutes, and I can assure you that's an accurate time because I've done it many times. And then 13 minutes from the city center airport to the University of Alberta Hospital. Notice the next segment is the Edmonton International Airport, 40 minutes to the Royal Alec and 31 minutes to the University of Alberta Hospital. Those are in good weather conditions and in good traffic conditions along a stretch of road that's acknowledged to be the busiest stretch of highway in this province. And you've all driven on it, and you know it can go very, very badly there. So what we're looking at is time-sensitive patients that we're transferring from this area, typically by fixed wing aircraft, to the International Airport. Some of those people are going to have bigger heart attacks than they should have, bigger strokes than they should have, longer periods without resuscitative efforts in critical care units, and ultimately, some of them are going to die. So I represent a group called the Save Our Medevac Society. We're just volunteer doctors, medevac pilots, concerned people from the rural areas of northern Alberta. And we are trying to make the point about the closure of that airport that I don't think has been stressed to the degree that we are pushing it. And that's that this is a health matter. Rather than leaving it in the hands of the city, the city of Edmonton, we're bypassing the city and saying that it's a provincial responsibility to maintain the standard of care that's already been established. Anything less than what we're looking at by transferring patients through the city center airport is not acceptable. The proposals that have been made by AHS and by the city of Edmonton are impractical. One of the things that they proposed is the beefing up the Vilnav Airport, and I don't know if any of you have been out to that airport out there. It's at least as far out as, as the International, and I don't think that's a realistic solution. Another solution is to use STARS to transfer, to transfer patients from the International Airport, the critically ill ones, the ones where it really, really matters, to transfer those patients from the International Airport to the two tertiary care hospitals, the Royal Alec and the University of Alberta Hospital. I'm the local STARS medical base director. It's not going to work. Every time there's a transfer of care, it takes time. It takes 15, 20 minutes to transfer over for a new crew to examine the patients, make sure they're all adequately packaged to their content. And then the other thing that's really concerning is that none of the IV sets are compatible. So the set that's on the ground unit is not compatible with on the, what's on the fixed wing unit, which is not compatible with the rotary. So every time there's a transfer of care, all that stuff has to be remixed and rehooked up and properly established. All of that takes time. I just can't see STARS being a solution. The other problem is STARS is often not there. Helicopters are very complicated machines, millions of moving parts, they're frequently going down. The new aircraft that's just been brought on, the AW-129, is a beautiful piece of machinery, but it's also very complex, and it's going to be out of service a lot. The other big problem with STARS is that they've got a primary responsibility, which is to serve the area around Edmonton. So if you look at the St. Paul catastrophe, for example, where the three kids were crushed in the, in the schoolhouse, three of those children were transported by air, two of them by fixed wing, including the sickest one, and one by rotary by STARS. The two fixed wing aircraft landed at the city center airport and were at the stallery in minutes. What would happen if they had landed at the International, if there was no downtown airport, they'd landed at the International? Would they wait for STARS to come and pick them up? They'd be going by road. So you're looking at 30 minutes there, 31 minutes excess time. Anyway, those are what, what I'd like, if you look at the handout on the back, I was hoping that, that you, Mr. Mayor and councillor, could, could help us by doing a couple of things. Number one, endorsing the efforts of our little society through a letter, or as the Mayor of Fort McMurray did, she put a very strong video message of support on our website. Number two, by sending letters of support on our behalf, on behalf of everybody in the north, I mean, this could be your kids for crying out loud, to the Premier, to the Minister of Health, to the local MLAs, and to the Edmonton MLAs, because ultimately, it's all, they're the ones that have to decide to keep this open. Emphasizing that the province has the responsibility to maintain the rapid access to tertiary medical care that we enjoy. Number three, to make possible, make resources available for our cause to assist in lobbying efforts. And number four, to help inform the community of the risks that we all face and to help organize community action. I was able to speak with a couple of you yesterday, and Mr. Mayor, I know I spoke with you a couple of months ago about this issue. So I suspect that most of you are up to speed on it. Do you have any specific questions I can answer?
Sure. I do see somebody in the queue for you, Dr. McGowan, Councillor Rice?
Today, I think it was today, Alberta Health Services issued a media release that was somewhat confusing. They said they're moving this, and I'm kind of, I'll be paraphrasing because I'm going from memory, which is not necessarily that great, but moving it into a state-of-the-art facility at the International Airport in sponsorship with STARS. So I guess I was kind of confused as to why STARS would enter into that kind of partnership when it doesn't work. It further said that only 2% of the patients transferred by Medevac were critically ill and that their time was of the essence. And so I guess I'm, I'm looking for some, some education. I said, you know, today in speaking to a member of the media, I don't think so. I don't think you Medevac someone to Edmonton just because, yeah, it might be worth trying. It seems to me that if they're being transferred by Medevac, we're, it's of an urgent nature. So I guess, and they talked about having outpatient at this hangar. It was, it was a very confusing media, media release, and I wonder if you could just very briefly kind of educate me on if I was correct to be skeptical.
I think you were correct to be skeptical, Councillor Rice. So STARS had to make the decision quite some time ago about where they wanted to locate their services. They really felt that the city center airport was not going to be supported by the city, and they had to move to the International. So they leased a hangar way out at the end of one of the runways at the International. And it's a big hangar, and there's lots of excess space. Alberta Health Services came to them afterwards and said, can we take some of your space and use it for our, our fixed wing Medevacs? So that's why they're co-located there. This unit that they're talking about establishing is supposed to have six beds, and I think it's going to be staffed by paramedics. So I think this will work really well. I actually applaud them for doing that for people who aren't very sick. So it's for the people who are going for semi-elected procedures, I think that'll work fantastic.
Do we Medevac people for semi-elect?
Oh, yeah. So if you've, if you've had a heart attack and everything's settled down, and you need to go for an angiogram, and there's really no rush, they'll, they'll wait until there's a hole in the schedule down there and then ship you down there. So, but if you, if things are otherwise, then you need to get down there in a hurry, and you need to get definitive care right away. Over the weekend, we had four patients, three of them children, Medevac from our hospital, all with, all very sick. And then 24 hours ago, there was a 46-year-old man who had a ventricular tachycardia arrest in the emergency department here. He was resuscitated, given the clot buster, all of the fancy support. He's brain injured as a result, but he was cooled, which is the modern thing to do, and then shipped down to Edmonton as quickly as possible. He needs to get to an ICU. He does not need to be held out at, at some outpatient department in a hangar at the International Airport. So it's, it's, it is not a solution for the sickest of the sick.
Let me see, Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. This has popped up quite a few times, Doctor, over the last few years, and I spoke my position before, I think in the city Grand Prairies, at Western Air?
Western Air Rescue.
Western Air Rescue, well, they helped save my family.
Did they?
So not necessarily the most critical, but who knew when we were in the hospital and they said, your wife is flying out, blah, 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 and you might lose your children. So the time is very important, and I'm always for trying to save the airport in Edmonton. But what can we do? I know there was something related in the election with Daniel Smith, and they didn't get one MLA elected in Edmonton. And I spoke, City of Edmonton, but as for support, I'm for your cause. It's helped be a part, possibly saving my family, and I think many others in the north. But how can we go about it? The Mayor, like the Mayor, the Mayor of Fort Murray, I've met her, she's a very intelligent lady. It's going to hurt some northern residents, definitely it's going to. But how can we, what else can we do? Because it's in city Edmonton boundaries.
That's the thing. I think what we want to do is try and shift the focus, Councillor McLean, from the city to the province and say, this is a provincial responsibility, this is a healthcare responsibility. I actually think, if you look at the airport, it's a huge space, and there's more than enough sp, they closed the long runway, the north-south runway, and they kept the southeast, northwest runway open. I think there's space to do both. If you look at large cities in the States, downtown airports are a wonderful thing to have. Look at Toronto, the Toronto Island Airport, for crying out loud, that thing is hopping. I think it's possible to do both. So we want to pressure the provincial government to try to keep that open and perhaps to expropriate the land.
Just sort of, I'm all for what you're trying to do. I just don't know what the ending result's going to be, because it's been a long struggle. I can remember, I think in the late 80s, this has been, early 90s, you've been talking about the airport, and I hope you're successful. I'll sign whatever I can, and I don't know where the rest of the councillors sit, but I know I'm supportive of it.
Thank you. Okay, Councillor O'Sullivan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Given, and thank you very much for attending tonight. I was informed very much from what you had to say. I'm on the Grand Prairie Airport Commission, I'm the Chair, and I was just concerned is, or will the federal government have any decision in any of this with the, the airport? Have you looked at that?
When we first started investigating, I, I was hoping that it would be a federal issue. But the lawyer who's helping us seemed to think that it was mostly provincial. He said that airports are federal jurisdiction, but they hand it all off to the province and indeed to the city.
I was just concerned maybe if, if air traffic was a concern with the growing of the city and they want to reduce some of the, I guess you could say, risks.
Yeah, I wonder. I think over the years, from pressures from the city, increasing user costs, restricting more and more the ability of aircraft to land at the city center airport, I think the amount of traffic has diminished markedly. I know they used to have an active control tower, and that's been diminished, just like it is in Grand Prairie, to a flight service station. So I don't think increased traffic is going to be the problem. Right now, yeah, it's interesting to see how the, the numbers get adjusted. The minister scaled down the numbers from 2010, the number of Medevacs, to 3,000. We have a number from AHS for 2012, which is closer to 5,000. So we're looking at 14 Medevacs roughly landing at the city center airport every day. And the other thing is, our helicopter, our BK, the STARS helicopter, we can fly now. We can pick somebody up at the, here at this hospital, or even a little bit farther a field, say, Valley View, pick somebody up there and go without refueling to the Mazinkowski, say. We have enough fuel, but just, to take off again and land at the city center airport to refuel. We don't have enough fuel to land on top of the Mazinkowski and then go to the International. So if we use our helicopter to transfer somebody down to the city, we're going to have to stop and refuel somewhere along the way once the city center airport closes. One of the other unfortunate things about all of this is that the provincial government and their aviation wing, they've got a number of airplanes that are hangared at the city center airport. They're going to continue to land there. The Premier and the rest of the ministers are still going to be using that airport for another year and a half. How come they can land there and the sick and dying from northern Alberta have to be diverted to the International Airport? I don't understand that.
I see one further question, Councillor Redman?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Good evening, Liam. Can you tell me what, can you describe your advocacy strategies or efforts to date? Like have you had, have you talked directly to the Minister of Health, our MLAs, those kind of things? That would help in terms of how we might fit. The ministers of health over the years have been addressed over and over, and they seem to wash their hands of the whole issue and say it's, it's a city responsibility. I don't know about that. I, I don't understand that rationale, because, I mean, if, if CN said that they wanted this track because it's, it's their track, and they wanted to put something up on that, the city would say, no, we have to have access to the hospital. It's to the greater good of the community to have access through your railroad track. So they would, you guys would expropriate the land or do whatever you have to do, or not. Anyway, so we've spoken, ministers of health have been, have been met with. I spoke with Wayne Drysdale. He's been involved in this, these discussions since, for years and years and years, and likewise holds up his hands, he says he feels helpless. And Everett McDonald was contacted by a colleague of mine, but I don't think he really understood the implications of what were, what was going on. We're also, we're going afield. We've had town hall meetings in Lac Lembish, here in Grand Prairie last week, Peace River, Fort McMurray, we're going to High Level this Thursday. We're also going to go to St. Paul, Lloydminster, and we're going to Jasper Hinton to try and make people aware, and then to put pressure on the provincial government to try and keep this open for health. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue. Dr. McGowan, thanks very much for the presentation. We deal with all of our delegation business towards the end of the agenda, so you're welcome to stay for that, or you can also catch us online if you wanted to.
Okay. Now, there's a colleague of mine who is a general surgeon. He's responsible for organizing pre-hospital trauma care in this area. If any of you would like to meet with him, he's available tomorrow. His name is Dr. Jeff Ibbetson. You can get in touch with me, and I can have him contact you.
Thanks, Dr. McGowan. Okay. We had changing, changing topics. We've had a good range so far in our delegations. The next group that let us know that they're going to be coming was our AquaTera team. And I see Mr. Mann's and team, Bernd?
Thanks, Mayor Given, and members of council. Pleased this evening to, to speak in support of the utility bylaw amendments further on in your agenda under the Environment Committee that relate to the AquaTera business plan for the next two years. Before I speak to that, I'd like to introduce a couple of folks that joined us, well, I guess a while ago now, but I don't know that you've met Jason Shembry, who's our Chief Financial Officer, and so he'll deal with all things financial and be involved in some of the USA updating processes that we hope to initiate here soon. And Michelle Savard, who's our Chief Operating Officer, who has lots of experience in utilities in municipal government, and he'll be dealing with any of the operational issues and service issues primarily that we have. So I wanted to just touch on our business plan as it relates then to the utility bylaw before you this evening. We've provided to council a new business plan for 2013 and 14 that identifies the key initiatives coming up in the next couple of years and the resources required. A number of those key initiatives are focused on accommodating continued growth in Grand Prairie and, and the region. The biggest single project that we'll have underway is an upgrade to our wastewater treatment plant. That project is costing $58 million. And we've awarded that contract, and that construction will get underway in the springtime. And that'll provide about 25 years' worth of further growth in the Grand Prairie region from that facility. We'll also be building a new transmission line from about the college area out to the airport reservoir to improve the water supply in the West End and support continued commercial and industrial growth there. And we're also in the process of concluding a long-term diversion license from the Wapiti River that will provide a secure source of high-quality raw water for, for the region as a whole. One of the missing pieces in infrastructure to support continued development in the West End is a gap in a trunk sewer on the west side of the city. And we welcome shareholder investment in that and have presented a request to the city earlier in the year, or earlier last year for that, and also are working with the development community, seeking partnership to see that gap completed, to facilitate continued growth in the West End and in the Northwest in particular. In terms of some of the, the resources required, the utility bylaw identifies the rate changes for the next two years. The water and garbage collection rates are intended to increase at more or less inflation at about 3.6%. The wastewater rates will increase, proposed at 10%, sorry, 7.5% each year. Would have been 10% had we not received $10 million in federal funding for the waste plant upgrade. And, and that rate increase is really driven by the need to fund and finance over the long-term that wastewater treatment plant upgrade. There is a new charge that we're recommending applying to residential customers as a, as a solid waste franchise recovery in the amount of $1.38, so that all of the revenues generated from tipping fees at the landfill can be maintained to fund that operation. So that's a quick overview. We're very pleased over the course of the last year to, and to have completed the implementation of multifamily recycling, and so that all residences now in the city have onsite or curbside recycling services. Another highlight from last year was our the West End and in the Northwest in particular. Uh, in terms of some of the, the, the resources, um, required, the, uh, utility bylaw identifies the rate changes, uh, for the next, uh, two years. The, uh, uh, water and garbage collection, uh, rates are intended to increase at, uh, more or less inflation at about three point six percent. Uh, the, uh, wastewater rates will increase, uh, uh, proposed at ten percent, uh, sorry, seven and a half percent each year. Would have been ten percent had we not received, uh, ten million dollars in federal funding for the waste plant upgrade. And, and that rate increase is really driven by the need to fund and finance over the long-term that wastewater treatment plant upgrade. Uh, there is a new charge that we're recommending, uh, applying to residential customers as a, as a solid waste franchise recovery, uh, in the amount of a dollar thirty-eight, uh, so that, uh, all of the revenues generated, uh, from tipping fees at the landfill can be maintained to, uh, fund that operation. Um, so, that's a, a quick overview. Uh, we, we're very pleased, uh, over the course of the last year to, uh, and, uh, to have completed the implementation of multifamily, uh, recycling and so that all residences now in the city have onsite or curbside, uh, recycling services. Uh, another highlight from last year was, uh, our, uh, styrofoam condenser that's now had its first full year of operation and, uh, saw significantly increased, uh, volumes coming through there, uh, to the extent that we, uh, diverted about twenty-four school bus full worth of, uh, recycle, uh, worth of styrofoam, uh, and were able to condense that into the size of about five fridges that, that is fully, uh, reusable. Uh, so, that's a, a quick overview and be pleased to speak to any, any questions that, uh, councillors might have.
Great. Thanks, Ms. Rens. I see, uh, Counselor Monroe first in the queue.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given, and, uh, I, I guess just, uh, the question I'm after is, um, I was wondering if you could give us a little bit more detail about the, uh, additional rate, the dollar thirty-eight on the solid waste franchise recovery fee. Uh, that's going to be a new charge on the, on the bill. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. Uh, the, um, uh, Aqua Terra through our franchise agreement with the city has a right to residential, um, garbage collection, recycling, and the disposal waste generated in the city. And, um, the city then receives, uh, for that right, uh, franchise fee that's based on ten percent of the revenue generated at the landfill through tipping fees. Uh, and so, um, uh, the intention of that charge is to shift that from, uh, collection at the landfill, uh, as a separate, uh, utility charge, similar to how the water and wastewater franchise fees currently show up. And so, that will, um, uh, generate about four hundred thousand dollars a year, which is, uh, the, uh, amount collected last year for, uh, the city under that solid waste franchise.
Okay, so, it's, it's, uh, I think I understand it. It's, i- instead of collecting it at the landfill, we're just collecting it directly off the bills then?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Monroe. Counselor Rice?
Meeting recently with the, uh, plastic recyclers. Um, it's a bit of a problem in terms of each municipality accepts different grades. There's no, uh, uniform, uh, what I can recycle in Grand Prairie. I can't recycle in Edmonton, which I then can't recycle in Lloydminster or whatever. Um, are you, uh, part of any movement that would see, um, some sort of, uh, of a level playing field as it relates to plastics? Because, I mean, it's huge. Plastics aren't going to go away.
Right.
And they certainly don't decompose in the landfill.
Right. Well, we participate with, uh, CARE and, uh, other organizations and, and advocate for recycling. In the city, we currently provide recycling of, of, um, uh, plastics one through seven. Uh, so, it's really just the plastic film that we're currently not able to collect curbside, although we continue to collect that at the Eco Center. Uh, so, you know, we, plus the styrofoam feel that we collect really a full range, uh, in Grand Prairie and certainly would like to see that expanded provincially, uh, but are pleased that at least Grand Prairie residents can recycle essentially all of the plastics, uh, that are, uh, identified that way.
Now, like, if I can, uh, styrofoam might be a, a misnomer. Um, you know, if you, if you buy a computer from Dell, it comes packed, like packed in a whole bunch of white stuff, which is a different density than if you buy an alarm clock from Walmart. And so, there's different, it's not necessarily styrofoam. It is some kind of packaging. Does that, does the densifier deal with all those grades?
It does. There's some things that it won't take. Uh, it won't take the peanuts.
Yeah.
Uh, the small stuff. Uh, so, it takes the white. It'll even take the, um, the food styrofoam that, that the meat will come in, as long as it's cleaned. Uh, that's really a key aspect of the condenser is to make sure that there isn't any contamination, any tape or anything else there. Uh, but otherwise, uh, that kind of packaging styrofoam in, in the blocks particularly, uh, will take. Uh, we even did a pilot project to see whether it could accommodate some of the, um, building styrofoam, uh, because of the flame retardants that it has, and, uh, it's able to take that too. Uh, so, so it is able to take, uh, uh, really the packaging styrofoam that's common.
So, one more question. Is, uh, so, our utility bills are going up seven and a half percent a year?
The wastewater charges are. That's, the rest of them are, are going up three point six percent.
Okay, so, um, if you had a crystal ball, do you anticipate there would ever be a time when our utility bills would go down? Like, the more people that use it, doesn't it get cheaper?
There, there is, there are some economies of scale, certainly. Uh, I mean, some of the costs associated with operating, uh, and providing those services continue to rise. So, our, our hope though is that, uh, our rates will continue to be competitive in comparison to others, uh, and that, uh, at some point in our, our, uh, vision is to grow the company and provide increased return, uh, both to shareholders and to, to keep our rates down, that at some point, we could see, uh, rates flatline or potentially reduce, but, uh, not, not in the short term.
So, we're not really competitive, because I don't have a choice. I mean, it's not like I'm saying, I'm not picking Aqua Terra. I'm picking A, B, C, but, so you do monitor to make sure that what we in Grand Prairie are paying for that service is not out of line with what the rest of Albertans are paying?
That's correct. That comparison is, is a key performance indicator for us, and in the surveys that we conducted last year, found that, um, Aqua Terra charges are about in the, in the median, in the middle of the number of cities that we compared with.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. Uh, a few more. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Hi, Baron. Um, because there's, there's people watching tonight on, uh, on our East Link. It's not on our monitors here, but we are on TV. Uh, I get questioned often, why, when we're not calibrating how much sewer water and, uh, freshwater we're using, why are we calibrating in the winter? Because nobody's watering their lawn or their gardens. So, it, it should be a, a proper calibration, but, and maybe just to, could you just explain that to me, uh, why one is more than the other? I get it at Safeway and at, uh, Superstore. The question, anyway.
Sure.
Mr. Rens?
Uh, the, the wastewater charges are, are more than, than the water charges currently and, uh, with, and will continue to create a bit of a gap that way. Uh, we bill a sewer based on the water usage, uh, whether that's in the winter or in the summer. Um, now, people can affect the, how much they pay by how much they use. And so, in the, in the summer, for customers that don't do so much wa- lawn watering, uh, their, their overall costs are less. Uh, we need to generate a certain amount of revenue over the course of the year to fund the sewer utility. Uh, and I know some communities do provide, uh, a, a break for the higher usage that occurs in the, in the summer because of outdoor watering. Were we to do that, we'd, we'd effectively have to recover more primarily from the lower volume users, uh, to give the relatively higher volume users a break in the summer. Uh, so, so part of it is that, that equity, and, and it's also, uh, a means of encouraging, uh, the wise use of water, so that, uh, there is a direct relationship between how much you use and how much you pay overall on your bill. Uh, and if you're able to conserve more water, particularly in the summer, uh, your bill's less.
Rain barrels, et cetera, which I'm a user of. Um, just a couple of quick ones. I'll go, uh, on, on these new fees, could you, Baron, maybe explain to me, how much of these fees are driven by provincial regulations or regulation changes or things that we have no control over, but it's a, it's a provincial regulation? Like, after Wat- Waterton, Walkerton, uh, you know, we're at a certain level where we have to treat our sewage, and I'm sure it costs more, so.
Yes. I mean, a, a key part of the wastewater treatment plan upgrade, in addition to increasing capacity to accommodate more growth, is to im- improve the quality of, of the water we put back into the Wapiti, uh, to meet more stringent provincial regulations, particularly for nutrient removal, uh, that, that we currently have a deadline of two thousand and sixteen for. So, so certainly a key component of that fifty-eight million dollar project is to meet more stringent, uh, provincial regulations. And, uh, the federal government has also come out with, um, uh, across the country, national wastewater regulations, and, and our upgrades will also meet, uh, those future regulations as well. So, part of the cost of the upgrade is to, uh, improve, uh, or reduce the impact, uh, on the, on the environment overall.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, the supplemental last one is, uh, we have that, uh, really good program, the styrofoam, uh, what did you call that? Maybe it's a?
Condenser?
The condenser, densifier.
Right.
And I do, I do, and I see an awful lot of people there, uh, bringing their styrofoam. But could you tell me, other municipalities that surround the city, do they use it? And if they do, are they paying for it?
Mr. Rens?
Currently, uh, our Eco Center is, is the place where, um, people can drop off styrofoam and, and at our landfill. Uh, we did a, a survey last fall in, in terms of where our, our customers are coming to from the Eco Center and found that at that time about forty percent were from outside the city. Uh, and found that actually, once the depots were commissioned, the traffic coming to the Eco Center increased significantly. Uh, now, since that time, uh, there's been some, uh, depots, uh, created, uh, around the city, and we haven't, um, done another survey since, but, uh, certainly a large portion of customers that have been using the Eco Center, um, are from outside the city. And, and are, one of our, uh, one of the items that we've identified is to look at means of recouping some of the costs of the Eco Center from some of those users. And so, that's something that we'll be pursuing.
Okay, thanks, uh, Mayor Given. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Counselor McLean?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Um, Mr. Manns, thank you guys for coming. Jason, I'm, couple of questions. Uh, since I got on council, I've noticed some things that have been really remarkable. The blue bag styrofoam condenser. And I was at, um, just because I sit on the Environment Committee, I was at a conference at Fort Mary Care, Upper Recyclables, and you have a lot of good individuals that work for Aqua Terra. Tim Conrad was there. He did a presentation on that. I don't know if it was over thirty buses that had been condensed with the styrofoam, or maybe it's up to forty now, but it's been pretty huge. And I think to answer Counselor Crokin, it was the only one being used in Alberta at the time. Uh, maybe that's changed. So, there's been some very, um, positive things with Aqua Terra. On the other hand, there's been other issues as well. And I know we got elected in two thousand and ten, but he came to us for a rate hike then as well, and it's very fresh in my memory, but not quite so fresh. I can't remember the raises, the hikes, rate hikes at that time. So, now you're before council, same council in three years for another rate hike. Do you have the rate hikes that you had for wastewater and for water from two thousand and ten in the fall on hand?
Mr. Rens?
Uh, I don't have those, um, uh, before me today. Uh, my recollection is that the, uh, the water rates increased at the rate of, uh, about inflation, around three percent. Uh, the sewer rates increased, I think it was about ten percent each year. Uh, and garbage collection, uh, changed because we introduced carts and then subsequently introduced the, uh, curbside recycling. Uh, so, the, the wastewater charges have been the area where we've seen the, the most increase in, in recent years. Uh, and again, that relates directly to the cost of providing that service and the investments that we're having to make to, uh, to upgrade it.
And, and just one more comment. I want to speak very highly of the workers you have out in the fields, minus thirty, they're down there shutting a valve off, and, uh, the hole's dug and it's pretty cold and they're working their butts off. But I do know this is the second time you're coming to this, one same council for another rate increase. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any further questions for Mr. Rens? I don't think so. Um, Baron and team will, uh, deal with your agenda item later, later on in the agenda, unless there was anything else you want to say.
No, thank you very much.
Great. Thanks very much.
Thanks.
And so, I believe that that was the, uh, the list of folks that had let us know in advance that they'd be attending. This is still the delegation portion of our agenda, and it is an opportunity for anybody in the community who would like to address council on any community-related matter to come forward. If there's anybody else out there that'd like to, they can make themselves available up front here and introduce themselves for our, uh, recording secretary, and, uh, please be welcome.
Hi, council. Uh, thanks for having me today. Um, I just want to address you all on...
You just have to introduce yourselves, who've got your name.
I'm Matthew Charbonneau. Um, just want to address an issue about Aqua Terra. Um, you know, curbside recycling, great. Um, you know, all these new incentives, the bins, the bags, that sort of thing's awesome. Um, but I have called, um, Aqua Terra requesting, um, reductions on my rates, because I recycle, I compost. I don't produce a whole lot of waste in the first place, so I only take my garbage out maybe once a month. I might recycle once a month. Um, and they basically said to me, if I, if I want to opt out of that, I basically have to forfeit my water service as well. So, that's like saying, you know, I, I don't want to have to pay the same amount as my neighbor who's watering their lawn every day in the summer, so why should I have to pay for the same, um, garbage and recycling? Um, so, I would like to see a change in the, um, utility, what is that? Let's see. Bylaw. Um, just that allows for, um, citizens to opt out or maybe have a sliding scale on, you know, how much they produce any, uh, year or how much they pay in terms of fees. Um, because, yeah, I don't want to have to shut off my water. And, yeah, Canada's rated fifteen out of seventeen, um, in waste production. This was done in two thousand and nine. Uh, like, on average, we produce seven hundred and seventy-seven kilograms of waste per person. So, I think we need to see some sort of incentive for people to produce less in the first place, so we don't have to, you know, pay so much for these programs anyways.
Great. Thanks very much for the presentation. Don't take off yet. There may be some questions for you. So, nobody's gotten a waistcoat free yet tonight without any questions, so, uh, I do see some people in the queue. So, Counselor Crokin, you had a question for Mr. Charbonneau?
Thanks, Mr. Charbonneau. Um, when you, when you're thinking of the occasions, were you thinking of a smaller garbage bin, not the ones that you can put, you know, body parts and animals in, or whatever?
Right. Um, oh, I, I looked into this a little bit, and, like, Saint Albert, actually, they have a program with different rates for different-sized bins. Um, so, I think that's a great way to do it. Um, and they, they were saying that, um, it would cost them a lot of money in terms of time for the drivers, um, to go and record each house that didn't produce waste or that didn't put out their garbage bin and that sort of thing. So, I was thinking maybe, you know, for the people that know that they don't produce a lot, enough waste to justify paying into the full program, maybe giving the bin back to Aqua Terra and buying stickers and just putting stickers on the bag when they have a bag to put out, something like that, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it was a really good solution that you and I could work on that. I, I like that idea, but it doesn't, doesn't work on a grand scale. But I think we should, uh, I'm glad you brought it up, and I think we still should work on it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Counselor Rice?
I just want to, this is my question, but it, now, it's a new one. You saying Saint Albert has this right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I just wanted to point out that, um, I know we're, we're talking water now, not garbage, but, uh, that was one of the reasons that Aqua Terra determined not to offer cheaper rates. Uh, the city gets asked, and Aqua Terra does every summer, to lower the rate, so people can water their flowers and keep them beautiful. The difficulty is that doesn't encourage people to conserve water, if you're getting, so, so they are very cognizant of that on the water side of it. So, maybe it's time to look at the wayside.
Right.
Counselor Monroe, and I'd ask councilmembers if, uh, if they could try and keep them to questions for the delegation. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, Matthew, I, I found the, or pardon me, I, I was copied a little bit on the, uh, conversation that you were having on Facebook with Aqua Terra earlier today. And I understand that, uh, the logistics of this would be quite difficult for Aqua, for Aqua Terra to, um, to basically accommodate that kind of re- request. However, I would like to see, uh, I guess council come up with some kind of a solution to offer incentives to people such as yourself that are, uh, doing a spectacular job of, uh, or doing your part, I guess, of, uh, recycling and, uh, conserving. So, uh, sorry, Mayor Given, not really a question, but, uh, maybe a question for later. We could direct administration to, uh, start devising some kind of a plan to address this situation.
Well, we certainly, uh, will deal again with all the agenda, sorry, with all the delegation, um, business at the end of the agenda, but, uh, I do see Counselor McLean?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, Matthew, I think it's a very good idea. It was brought up when they brought the bins, started the bin program in the city, and then blue bag as well. You know, I, I don't produce as much in the garbage bin. Why am I paying the same? And it was kind of related to us in a way that you got the edu- education tax system going off. I'm going to ask them a question, Mayor. Uh, where, okay, say your kids are growing up, but you don't want to pay that no more. You did your deed, and, uh, take that out of the equation. As me, I didn't have my children to thirty-seven and I paid into education tax system for almost twenty years. But if you take a certain percentage out, the rest will fall, and we won't have as strong as education, uh, uh, system. But I do believe on Counsel Monroe was saying is that an incentive, some kind of incentive that maybe you're only going to have one bag. Like, I can fit like three big bags in mine, and with little children, I, I fill it usually. I'll have to be honest. And with little children, I fill it usually, I'll have to be honest. I should do better. But it would be nice to have incentive program. And I think it's very, I'm very glad you came forward to talk to us about it, because I don't know if that's even really been touched here on council.
Okay. Thanks, Councilor McLean. Councilor Rice?
Have you had any discussions with Evergreen? You know, they are the contractor, and I'm thinking they would have been a logical first step. I know Lorenzo's very, very creative. I mean, he started the business because of his commitment to recycling and reducing waste. But have you had, they have an office here to say, how big of a problem would it be for them to do the various size thing? So have you had any discussions with Evergreen?
As, like, as far as I knew, it was an Aqua Terra service. So when I called and they said, no, you can't cancel it unless you cancel your water, that was basically...
Okay. Thank you. It might be worthwhile having a conversation with Brian from Evergreen to see. I know they have contracts in several municipalities, so they may be familiar with a billing system that recognizes the different sizes at St. Albert's.
Okay. Thank you. And they have different bins, too. It's not just packs, so, pretty cool. I don't see anybody else in the queue, but I did have a question for you. One thing that was discussed, especially when the new bins came out, was that they seemed to be bigger than the amount that you could put out in terms of the city having a three-bag limit. At the time, we discussed that there was a future potential to go to bi-weekly collection instead of weekly, as people got used to the system and got used to the blue bag system. Do you think that that would be something that would do the same, would it sort of address the same concept that you're talking about, about encouraging people to reduce their, the amount of waste that the city...
Yeah, essentially, I think it would. I mean, the St. Albert system, they do waste collection and compost collection, I think, every two weeks, and then the recycle collection is every single week. So I think just by doing that, you're...
Similar sort of thing?
Yeah.
And then the other one that I had was, have you had a chance to see anything about Aqua Terra's landfill gas capture program?
I just learned about it today, actually, as I was posting.
Okay. Yeah. That's great. Glad to see that you're sort of educating yourself, and I think you'll be really impressed with that program, especially when it comes to the ability to make good use of organics and some proper use of them. Okay, so if there weren't any other questions, thanks very much for bringing the issue to council's attention. As I said with everybody else, we'll deal with the delegation business at the end of our agenda. You're more than welcome to stay, but you can also watch this. It'll be archived online by tomorrow, I think.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Charbonneau. This is still the delegation portion of our agenda. Anybody that would like to address council on any community-related matter, of course, is welcome to come. I see one more person coming forward. Make yourself welcome and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Bailey Armstrong. I have a lot of the same concerns that Matthew does. One of the things that I noticed between the city of Grand Prairie and Aqua Terra, whether it's a business contract or what, I'm not sure. The bylaw doesn't have a lot to do with the contract with Aqua Terra, I guess. As you saw on Facebook, we were talking, and Aqua Terra was contradicting the environmental stewardship of Grand Prairie, like, quite a lot, to a degree that it makes me question whether the bylaw is in agreement with what your contract actually is with them. So, for example, the environmental stewardship says, talk to Aqua Terra, and Aqua Terra says, contact the bureaucrats at the municipal levels in Alberta locally. So, once again, doesn't make much sense. Do you guys have the ability, I guess a question for you, is, do you have the ability to track the garbage and recycling pickup in any way? Or is that just, this is what it is, here's your bins, here you go? Or are you able to, like, actually track how much people are contributing to that waste?
So, the city of Grand Prairie doesn't track that. Aqua Terra does on our behalf. And I believe that they have numbers annually on how much waste is generated, as well as how much recycling is generated. I know they report that to us on a relatively frequent basis, so those numbers do exist.
A frequent basis, is that like a yearly basis, or is it a monthly sort of thing? Do you have any idea?
I would say that they probably come at least yearly.
Yearly?
And give us updates.
Can you put it broken down, huh?
Yeah. I'm sure council could ask for any level of detail that we wish to hear, and Aqua Terra gets it on a regular basis.
Okay, that's what I've been hearing. Once again, the reward and incentive program, I think that's really important. If you can't do a lot of the other things that I have comments about, which may not be so reasonable, I think whether it's the city doing it or whether it's Aqua Terra doing it, there was a comment on three shareholders, and their success equals success for the shareholders who received twenty-eight million dollars in dividends and franchise since 2003. In that regards, there should be some sort of incentive. That's a lot of money. Whether it's a family pass to the multiplex for a year, whether it's a rebate on your bill, or whatever it may be, whether it's the city or Aqua Terra establishing that and finding that, it's important that's done. It talks a lot about the Edmonton population. So, this is in the Facebook thing again, the Edmonton population, that's eight-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand people versus the fifty-thousand in Grand Prairie. That's fifteen times the population of Grand Prairie. And they said that Edmonton's waste pickup is priced at double what Grand Prairie is. So at fifteen times the population, Edmonton is double. The math, I'm not good at math, but that still doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And we had the Stars guy in before. Sorry to kind of get off track here, but what about money gained from this? It seems like it's a very business-oriented thing. It's a profit-making, you know? Why can't money gained from that go towards benefiting something like Stars or like the healthcare system within the city, right? So...
Well, that's actually one that you mentioned, the twenty-eight million dollars, and the money that Aqua Terra pays to its shareholders, and the shareholders of the city, the county, and the town of Sexmouth. The money that Aqua Terra pays to those shareholders, we use to do all the stuff that the city provides for services. Without those funds, either property taxes would be a lot higher, or we wouldn't be able to do as much stuff. So, that actually, your comment is right on point. That's basically exactly what happens. It's just that that money comes to the local communities, the shareholders, rather than to the provincial government.
Okay. And I guess, they talked about opt-in. It was opt-in, you can't opt-in, you can't opt-in. Matthew wants to opt-out. So, on that regards, I can't see why it can't be a give and take. Like, I'm slightly, I'm in the county of Grand Prairie, and I have cardboard piling up and piling up, and what we do is incinerate it. We don't really have any sort of collection available for that. He's paying thirty dollars. I would gladly pay thirty dollars to have someone come pick up that cardboard recycling for the five dollars it costs in gas to make the trip out there. So it could be give and take. I think there's a lot of benefits to that as well, if you're looking towards the county in any...
Sure. Well, the county is one of the three shareholders, and you could certainly make a presentation to county council about, as a county resident, about your desire to have additional recycling services. They, the city of Grand Prairie, our council, heard from our residents that they wanted to see blue bag services, and so we asked Aqua Terra to provide that, and that's why it exists in the city. I remember from the media a few months ago that there were county residents that were starting to speak to county council about this, and so that certainly would be an avenue that's available to you.
Okay. Well, then, I think I just would like to reiterate the reward or incentive program. I think that's really important to establishing anything, reducing waste, rewarding those who are, it's council something.
Great. Excellent. I see nobody gets away free, apparently. Councilor McLean has a question for you?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Bailey, thanks for coming in front of us and talking. I remember the first time I stepped up to the table, I, being myself, I was very nervous. And I think it's very important that, like, you live in the county, to approach your county council, because I was born in Nova Scotia, raised in Alberta, but my grandma, for the last twenty years, is getting collection out, recyclables, out in the country, like, forty clicks away from any major centi, center. So, in Alberta, a lot of the county areas are failing right now. They haven't started a real good program, and they aren't. They aren't succeeding. And a lot of people from the county do come to the city, to the EcoCenter. So I think the first approach would be going to your county and asking, why aren't we this? And look at the province of Nova Scotia, and see what they're doing and offering for pain. And then, like Mayor Given said, about some of them that have already started the discussion, I think starting discussions with other provinces of the twenty-year ahead is kind of behind the people. So, thank you for coming.
Okay. Yeah, you're welcome. I think mostly the main reason that I came forward on behalf of the county anyway, especially for myself, is on Facebook, once again. Aqua Terra mentions that they include the county of Grand Prairie and the town of Sexmouth, and I'm right in between the middle. And, yeah, I don't see any of it. So, maybe that's got to go to Aqua Terra again, but this, I feel like this is a good start in the right direction, so...
Sure. Yeah, no, definitely. And we appreciate you coming tonight. So each shareholder, just so that you understand, for the structure of Aqua Terra, each shareholder, Aqua Terra is basically their service provider, and each community gets to decide what level of service they'd like to have in their jurisdiction. And so the city of Grand Prairie has decided on a certain level of service, blue bag recycling and the EcoCenter with the styrofoam condenser and the style of garbage pickup that we have. The county of Grand Prairie can do the same within their service area, and they haven't chosen to offer those services. The county, I believe, relies on, mostly on their county landfill, which, as I understand, county residents can take their solid waste out to for free. So if county residents or Sexmouth residents have a desire to see an increased level of service, the best method of approach is probably to speak to their local councils, because their local councils will then talk to Aqua Terra, and they're the ones that can ask Aqua Terra to adjust the level of service to what the residents are asking for.
Okay. And I also heard at the end there, Aqua Terra was speaking, they said the county contribution to the Eco Terra Center in Grand Prairie has caused an inflation. So they said around forty percent, and they would like to inflate rates to accommodate this usage. So I feel like if the county is using a local, city-based thing so much, that, you know, I think that's where the city comes into play again, as a pair to, like, going straight to county. You guys need to speak with the county somehow and balance that out a little bit, so it's not your expense.
If you were going to say that you think that county should be contributing to that service, or the cost of that service, that county residents are utilizing, I think you'd probably find lots of support on this table for that. But again, you'd have to, again, it's up to county council to hear that from their taxpayers and their residents on what services that they'd like to see, or that they're willing to pay for those types of services and encourage the county to consider opportunities to contribute.
Okay.
Thanks very much for your presentation today. If there wasn't anything else?
No.
Thanks very much.
Not yet.
Okay. I don't see, I think we might have exhausted the crowd. I don't see anybody else that's left to come forward for a delegation portion of our agenda. I don't see anybody making any moves, so we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda, and we'll move on to public hearings. We had none of those. We had no unfinished business, no reports for tonight, but that takes us directly into committee business. And our first item was nine point one, the Special Community Development Committee. Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Special Community Development Committee meeting held January the seventh, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Okay.
Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Crokin, do you have anything to say about that set of minutes?
No, no, no further, thanks.
I think that business was dealt with at the council meeting of that night.
Yes.
Then nine point two, Public Works Committee from January eighth, Councilor Radburn. You're going to handle that for Councilor Gustafson, I think, right?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held January eighth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council award tender T-70-547-12 to Diamond International Trucks, GP Limited, in the amount of $90,000, $400,000, excluding GST. This contract is so that this Diamond International Truck will be the three-year supplier for replacement or additional heavy truck units. These monies are in the budget, either in the Equipment and Replacement Fund or in Department Capital Budgets.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. In terms of nine two two, we've just received information from administration that the land use framing position paper is being re-looked at, and with some additional information has come to light. So there'll be some changes to this. So it would be my motion that we refer this item back to Public Works.
Sure. And Councilor Radburn, the motion was sort of in two parts. Is it both parts?
Yeah, I think we refer the recommendation as a package back to Public Works, because that might have implications for the other information that we want to present to the Regional Advisory Committee. Council, so...
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. So a motion to refer back to the committee based on administration giving us an update today that the position paper for the upper piece was going to be, there was going to be a new draft coming forward. Any discussion on that motion of referral back to committee? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Radburn, anything else?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. Just identify four other agenda items in this committee's business. We did receive concerns with respect to safety issues at O'Brien Lake and Sixty-Eighth Avenue intersection, and that we've asked administration for a short. What is, what we're doing short and long term in terms of looking at the safety in that intersection? We approved the development permit in an urban reserve zone. Distractionary use was a manufactured home, and we approved that. There was, it is a replacement, actually. There was a manufactured home there already. Third, one hundred and thirty-second Avenue Functional Study. Spent a considerable amount of time on this. That agenda item has been sent back to administration to look at the recommendations from the Chamber of Commerce and other stakeholders that came to the meeting. And finally, the public transit location, we will be coming back to a committee here soon, based on some discussions that we had at our planning session last week. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. I think that was all the business for that committee, and that takes us to nine point three, the Community Development Committee from January eighth. Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held January the eighth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Did anyone note any, anything out of place in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Rice?
Just maybe a point of order. This committee meeting contains three policy recommendations, approval of one and rescinding of two. We have a whole committee called Policy Review Committee, so I'm not quite sure why these didn't go there, why they're popping up on community development.
Sure. We can maybe ask, I believe the...
Community Growth Director.
Yeah, I believe that the policies two oh four and two oh five that are being recommended to be rescinded actually did go through that committee. And so I'll look to the Community Living, Community Growth, Community Living Director?
All the community.
Your worship, certainly policies two oh four and two oh five did go through the Policy Review Committee and were redirected to Community Development to make the formal recommendation to council. Perhaps Community Growth Director can talk about policy one eighteen.
Actually, we'll just hold off, and so we've got an answer on two of them, and we'll get Councilor Crokin to speak to one eighteen, and maybe the details on that one will come out in the discussion.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Mayor Given. I move council approve policy one one eight, citizen engagement policy, and further, council approve the recommendations contained in the report to the community.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Councilor Rice?
Serious concerns, I'm looking at page three of three, and perhaps if the chart Serious concerns, I'm looking at page three of three, and perhaps if the chart was explained a little better. I'm looking at Empower to Place Final Decision Making in the Hands of the Public. Many years ago, we used to have what was called a Parks and Recreation Board. The difficulties that we experienced through that is you had a group of people very dedicated to that area of the city making recommendations. However, when those recommendations came to council, council then had to overlay those recommendations with all of the needs of the city. And so all of their recommendations would not always get approved, because it didn't fit with, with other priorities in the city. Those people had certain expectations that they had given of their time and their advice and expected them to be passed. It created all sorts of difficulty and hard feelings. I can't believe, like, to place final decision-making in the hands of the public, as each member of this council knows, and particularly those that were elected two and a half years ago, there is way more homework than they anticipated when they ran for council. There is pounds and thousands of hours. I guess I worry that decision-making for people who may not have all of the facts is concerning to me.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments?
Can somebody maybe explain this chart? Am I reading the chart wrong? It's a very convoluted thing.
Sure. So I'll speak to the chart, Counselor Rice, if that's okay. I think, I think the, there's sort of a paragraph earlier that references why that's there, and it says, it's on the page just ahead of the one that you mentioned, the third paragraph up from the bottom, says the Citizen Engagement Spectrum, which you're referencing, will be used by the organization to determine the most feasible level of involvement prior to making a commitment to achieving any level of engagement on a project or initiative. So I think that paragraph really puts that, that spectrum into context to say that before we do anything, we'll make a conscious decision about where that initiative should land on that spectrum. So I think it says, in the situations like you reference, where it might not be appropriate to be in that final column, where we hand ultimate decision-making to sort of the general public, then administration would think about that before doing it.
Guess what that third paragraph up clearly illustrates to me is that the term plain language is a foreign concept to this policy.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I want to find where Counselor Rice is speaking to. With page three?
Page three, the whole chart. Right here.
Empower. Yeah, that's a very good question, huh?
Okay. Any further discussion or debate? Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move counsel rescind policy two oh four, hosting grant policy, and any procedures associated with this policy. And further counsel rescind policy two oh five, development and maintenance of community facilities and any procedures associated with this policy.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Any further discussion or debate? Questions or comments on these? We heard earlier from administration that both had gone through the Policy Review Committee and were recommended for removal, so any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin, anything else to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Given. Mrs. Ms. Donelda Lang from Community Social Development Manager, she introduced Diane Morrison with Perfecting Tomorrow Incorporated, and she, she has been working on her community mapping. And it was very exciting to see somebody who's very excited about the mapping. I mean, if you weren't excited by the time she was finished her fifteen, twenty minutes, or whatever it was, it was very exciting. And I don't have the report here with me, but I do believe it is online.
Mapping. I wonder if the Director of Community Living would...
Yeah.
If it's not online, we certainly are in the process of getting it there.
Might not be available, yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. No, that's, that's all there was.
Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Counselor Rice.
Explain mapping. You mean like, this road goes here and that road goes there, or is it providing a framework of community services?
Ms. Roth?
Your worship, it is exactly that, providing a framework of community services and overlaying it with our demographics that were available through latest census data, overlaying that with the map of the city of Grand Prairie, so you can see which neighborhoods have which demographics and, and how that interplays with the social services that we provide and are involved with in our community.
Okay. Thanks very much, Ms. Roth. I think that's, that's got it.
I couldn't say it.
If there's nothing else from Community Development Committee, then we'll move on to Environment Committee from January fourteenth. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. I move that counsel receive the minutes of the Environment Committee meeting held January fourteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anything out of place? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that one, that motion carries. Counselor Monroe?
I'll move that counsel give first reading to bylaw C one-one-three-nine-L to amend the city AquaTera utility bylaw. And Mayor Given, I don't believe that this requires any further introduction, as we, it was a big part of our discussion during the delegation section.
Okay. Thanks, thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. So a motion for first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. One opposed, Counselor Monroe?
I'll move that counsel give second reading to bylaw C one-one-three-nine-L to amend the city AquaTera utility bylaw.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor McLean, or excuse me, Counselor Monroe. I see Counselor McLean in the queue for discussion and debate. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Yoon. I just want to comment here before I vote. I wrote this down, because it's quite a bit on the mind, and you can't remember it all, so I wrote this one down. The city rate taxpayers are being asked once again to bear the burden of expansion happening. Even if we vote not to accept this rate increase, in the shareholders' agreement, we will still have to pay for this, probably out of general revenue. Besides, who is paying or not, it is time to have a major discussion on AquaTera. Of course, we want every community to have clean and reliable drinking water. That was a good vision the previous city council had years ago, when they went into agreement with the county and the town of Sexsmith. But I don't think this vision has stayed true. When you have the county become an urban instead of rural right on our borders, this is a double-edged sword. Raise the rate and lose huge commercial tax base. I personally believe that Governor Alberta has to look at this in the reworking of the MGA. The town of Beaumont wants to plan for fifty years. We need to do the same and watch for our taxpayers. I will not be voting for this tonight.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? First, second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Monroe?
I'll move that counsel have third reading of bylaw C one-one-three-nine-L to amend the city AquaTera utility bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. So this is a motion to have third reading of this bylaw amendment here tonight. A motion to have third reading on the same night needs to be unanimous, otherwise the third and final reading will come back at a future council meeting. Any discussion or debate on the motion or the merits of having third reading here tonight? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does not pass, and so it will come back at the, sorry, is not unanimous, and so that most, that bylaw amendment will come back at a future city council meeting. Was there anything else from that Environment Committee meeting, Counselor Monroe?
Certainly, Mayor Given, we did receive, we had a delegation present to give us an update on the community garden, and it looks like they're considering two thousand and twelve, a huge success down there. They've got a lot of things on the go, and they're looking forward to two thousand and thirteen. Other than that, it was a pretty quick meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. That would take us to nine point five, the Protective Services Committee from January fifteenth. And I think Counselor O'Toole, you're going to handle that for Counselor Wong, right?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I recommend counsel receive the minutes of the Protective Services Committee held, a meeting held January fifteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, I have two comments. We had a delegation from Fire Chief Cook from the county of Grand Prairie.
Sure. Is this on the next motion, nine point five point one?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe just make the motion to introduce it, and then you can speak to it.
Okay. Recommend counsel direct Mayor Given to write a letter of support to the Peace Region Fire Chiefs Association in support of the Peace Region Fire Search and Rescue Training Proposal.
Right. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. You can speak to it to introduce it.
We had Fire Chief Lemieux from Grand Prairie report to the committee that the Peace Region Fire Chiefs has developed a proposal for the fire and search and rescue training, regional training, the, seeking municipal support, and to move this proposal for a pilot project in the northwest of the province for consideration.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Discussion or debate? Counselor Rice?
Is there any money required? As, I guess I'm a little spooked because of the RCMP training facility in southern Alberta that didn't work real well. So I wouldn't want to see us get into a situation like that.
So from what I understand, Counselor Rice, is a fact-finding mission here, to see if there's a need, and to see who would be involved financially. So we're looking for the province to come ahead, and other municipalities, to see if it would be the location to have it here.
Okay. Secondly, I want to commend Fire Chief Lemieux. It's very exciting that the Fire Chiefs Conference is going to be held in Grand Prairie during our hundredth anniversary year, and I really commend him for taking that initiative. I think it's going to be a thrilling addition to the hundredth anniversary celebrations.
And to speak with that, it will be in June seventh to the eleventh, two thousand fourteen. And it's been one of the only times it's been held outside of Calgary or Edmonton.
There'll be five hundred participants from across Canada?
Plus. So as far as Manitoba to Vancouver, for sure, and possibly eastern than that.
Excellent. Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I don't know if it goes to Counselor O'Toole or to community safety on sending a letter from the mayor directing to support a Peace Regional Fire Search and Rescue Training proposals. But I remember when Chief Dan Lemieux was at the committee that day, I asked him the question about volunteer service. And as you know, Grand Prairie Search and Rescue is a volunteer organization, need about twenty thousand from city a year, but that maybe barely covers some costs, and it's mostly volunteer round. So I imagine this just isn't going to be full-time firemen. This is going to be a major volunteer group involved this as well. And what are they looking for? I would like to know, by community safety, are they looking for someone to direct it all? Are they actually looking at making a facility? Or is it just for training purposes? I think it's a great idea, but like, what's the letter asking for?
So I guess as the guy that's going to have to write the letter, I, I can kind of speak to that. As I understand the request, it's that the city of Grand Prairie expressed their support for exploring this concept, and that letter will be used by the Peace Regional Fire Chiefs to go after the provincial government, to get them to fund the cost of doing that type of study and analysis of what sort of facility is needed for training for fire personnel in the northwest region and for technical search and rescue people in the northwest region. And so any study would basically look at the needs of those two groups, the volunteers, as well as the professional firefighters, full-time firefighters that we have in the city of Grand Prairie, and the volunteer services, which are more common in the rural and smaller communities. So this letter is, is basically a letter of support saying, we think it's a good idea to ask the provincial government to put some money into helping us do a study to find out what's needed. And then there'll be many points along the way where new information would come to council before the next step is taken, was the response that we heard at the meeting. And I think somebody asked the question very specifically, is there any monetary commitment from the city at this point to this project? And the answer that was given there was no. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick note that at the meeting, the Grand Prairie Regional College is looking to be a partner in this venture as well. And I thought that was very exciting, that they can broker some of the training needs as one part of the model. It might be a very, very effective one.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. If there's no further discussion and debate, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Was there anything else to highlight in that set of minutes? Counselor O'Toole?
No, we talked already. I was just going to mention that the, that Chief Cook from the county and Dan Lemieux from the city of Grand Prairie discussed the Alberta Fire Chiefs Association Conference in two thousand fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Then that takes us to nine point six, the General Government Services Committee. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move counsel receive the minutes of the General Government Service Committee meeting held January fifty, two thousand thirteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anything out of place? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn? Excuse me. I'll recognize Counselor Rice.
I'll declare conflict in these chambers.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice.
Given that, Mayor Given, I think I'd like to deal with nine-six-one and nine-six-three, so that when Ellen comes back, then she can stay back for a while. So I would move that counsel give first reading to bylaw C eighty-eight-eight-zero-one-E to amend the BRZ bylaw. And just speaking of this, the committee certainly is supportive of the bylaw changes, as Harold has outlined to us, there are some housekeeping relative to board and governance procedures, and the change in the makeup of the board to add this public member. So we decided as a committee, in terms of recommendation, that we give first reading today and allow some opportunity to communicate with the entire membership of the business BRZ, so that they were on board, and we would do that with the same letter that we sent out about the, when council is dealing with the budget. So it'll be back next, in two weeks.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn, for that introduction on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So Counselor Radburn, you said you were going to go to...
Yeah, so I would move that council review the two thousand thirteen Business Revitalization Zone budget in council chambers on Monday, March fourth, two thousand thirteen, at six-thirty. And this is an annual motion that identifies when that, when council is going to review the budget. Be of note to people who are watching or listening, that actually on February twenty-seventh, the budget is presented to association members at their AGM eight AM Mingles on Main. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. We could just let Counselor Rice know that the two agenda items that she would have a conflict with have been completed. Okay. And Counselor Radburn, nine point six point two?
I would move counsel give first reading of bylaw C twelve-seventy-seven-A to amend the city administration bylaw. This is a follow-up to a fairly recent admin reorganization bylaw that we passed a few months ago. The bylaw identified only tenders, not RFPs, so the terminology has been changed to reflect competitive bids. The dollar value above which council must consider the contract awards is in, and there's some housekeeping to correct references to operating in capital budgets and to remove duplications.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So a motion for first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
I would move counsel give second reading to bylaw C twelve-seventy-seven-A to amend the city administration bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. And that, thank you. And that motion carries.
Get the results, yeah. Thank you. I would move counsel have third reading of bylaw C twelve-seventy-seven-A to amend the city administration bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. And as with the previous item that we had this motion on, this must carry unanimously in order for council to have third reading of this bylaw here tonight at tonight's council meeting. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, so we can have third reading. Counselor Radburn?
Good, thank you. Then I would move counsel give, give third reading to bylaw C twelve-seventy-seven-A to amend the city administration bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and I believe that handles all the business from the General Government Services Committee. Did you want to highlight anything? Did you want to highlight anything?
Yes, three, Mayor Given, if I might, thank you. We did receive a letter from Aqua Terra regarding possible USA updates, and so they've suggested a process whereby the mayors, the two mayors and REVE with their CEOs meet to determine the process by which that might happen. We received the quarterly dashboard financial information report for information, and we received the communication plan, which was a, one of our strategic priorities, and we provide, had some good discussion and had some suggestions for, for change, and David's going to bring that back at a future meeting. And then it will come to council. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. That takes us into 9.7, the Arts Development Committee. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that counsel receive the minutes of the Arts Development Committee meeting held January 16, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Monroe, anything you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Certainly. We actually had a, quite a, quite a full meeting there, had a number of delegations come, such as Jeannie Purnell from the Boys Choir and Mayor Given himself in regards to the Frost Moon Celebration. Gave away, we had $70,000 budgeted under the festival funding, and we gave away just shy of $50,000 and funded such events, such as the Troyanda Society, Friends of Saskatoon Island Swamp Festival, Boys Choir, and the Real Shorts Film Festival as well. One of the new ones that we did offer some funding to this year is the Frost Moon Celebration, and that's coming out of the Arctic Winter Games funding, legacy fund, pardon me. And I'd certainly answer any questions if Counselor Rice had any.
Oh, Counselor Rice?
What about the Street Performers Festival?
Absolutely. Street Performers Festival is in again.
Thank you. But not the Halloween parade.
You can't get it if you don't apply.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. We had no items of correspondence tonight, but we did have a fairly lengthy delegation portion of our agenda. The Business from the Downtown Association and Mr. Friesen, I believe, have been addressed. The Aqua Terra items have both come up on our agenda, so I believe those have been dealt with. The next was Dr. McGowan and his presentation regarding the City Centre Airport and Medivac Services. Counselor Rice?
I would be prepared to make a motion that we endorse the efforts of the Save Our Medivac Society through a letter of support to the premier, the Minister of Health, our local MLAs and the Edmonton MLAs emphasizing that the province has a responsibility to maintain the rapid access to tertiary medical care that we enjoy and that any decline in transfer times is not accessible, and further that the mayor explore the production and posting of a video on the Save Our Medicare, Medivac Society website, and that we work with them to assist in their lobbying efforts and informing the community, and further that our lead on this be Mayor Given. He's as, he's as video-ready as Melissa Blake.
Thanks for the endorsement, Counselor Rice. Discussion and debate on the motion, Counselor McLean?
Mayor Given, I'm totally supportive of that. Counselor Rice, Northern Alberta is producing most of the wealth in this province now from resources, and it's time to stand up for our northern residents and say to the governor of Alberta, "We want some proper service for individuals that live up here in remote communities," and that is one of them that is huge for getting proper health care, and I totally support.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Koken?
Thanks, Mayor Given. No, it's Counselor McLean, it's not about time. We have been, I mean, I sat on many meetings, you know, over the years, so I know we want to be forceful at this time. The only question I have is, is there going to be a monetary implication? If there is, do we have anything in either one of community living or growth? Do we have anything in the budget to assist your video, Mayor Given?
Mayor must have a budget.
I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay. I'm sure we'll find it, community growth will find something to assist you if there's some money needed. Thank you.
Any further discussion or debate on the motion? I'll just offer, I guess, my perspective on this. I certainly recognize the need to maintain the level of service that we have today or perhaps improve it. I guess I would be more comfortable if this motion spoke specifically to that. One concern I have is the, the general endorsement of the society, when I'm not intimately aware of all of the activities that they've undertaken, our initiatives. I certainly would be more comfortable with expressing the City of Grand Prairie's opinion that our residents need timely access to care and that any closure of the City Centre Airport should not result in, in reduced access, and that if the City Centre Airport is the only way to sort of keep that level of service, then, then that needs to be considered. My concern, I guess, is just broadly that the City of Edmonton has many times decided that the direction that they're going to take on this, and I appreciate the new angle that this, this group is taking to go directly to the provincial government, and I think that's where, that's where I see us targeting our efforts, saying, "Well, the City of Edmonton has made their decision, now it's up to the provincial government to guarantee the level of service that Northern Albertans have come to trust and expect." So...
How does that differ from my motion? My motion addressed two...
Your motion seemed to be, to be sort of all of the above in terms of endorsing the efforts of the, the society, and so, yeah, I, I will be supporting the motion.
If you want amended, that it be number two?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly, I guess that's the direction that I'm going, is really we're speaking to the provincial government, and I would prefer to communicate directly with them rather than just a blanket statement out to the general public on a website, and then that way we can get our specific concerns to the right people.
And I would amend the motion to reflect that, and ask maybe you go on the website and check out what Mayor Blake has said.
Sure. Thanks, Counselor Rice. So Counselor Rice, I appreciate that. Any further discussion or debate on Counselor Rice's amended motion, which if I'm correct, Counselor Rice, we'd basically remove that number one?
Yes.
So that we're targeting specifically our, our audience.
Yeah.
Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So that dealt with the Medivac presentation, Dr. McGowan's presentation, and then there was Mr. Charbonneau and, and sorry, I can't remember Bailey's last name, I missed it. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that we refer the delegation, Mr. Charbonneau, so, hang on here, I better think about what I want to say.
Would it, would the essence of his presentation be that council consider incentives for waste reduction?
Thank you.
Is that, was that the concept?
So, how about I move that we receive the delegation for information and that we refer a reduction in recycling incentive plan back to the appropriate committee?
Okay. Okay, so we'll do that in two parts, because there, one's just the receipt for information, so I'll call for the vote on the received for information. Thank you. And that motion carries, and then so the second portion was to refer back to the appropriate committee, the concepts sort of forwarded. Any discussion or debate on that motion?
Maybe.
Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll, I'll maybe just speak a little bit to that motion. I, I just think that it is important that when we do have people that are trying to do an honest effort to do their part as far as conserving and recycling is, is concerned, we should, we should be taking a look at that and seeing if there is any way in rewarding people that do, do their part. And I, I know that it can be quite difficult for Aqua Terra or any kind of utility to, to incorporate that into their daily practices. I can imagine that it would be a logistical nightmare to do something like that. However, I'd like us to at least explore it and see if there is something that can be done.
Thanks, Counselor Monroe. So Counselor, a few in the queue here, Counselor Koken?
Thanks, Mayor Given, and to you, Counselor Monroe. I have asked them at curbside if they could receive a smaller receptacle. I do have one at home, it's a green one, it's the same idea, and they said that their forks can't pick up a smaller one. I said, "Okay, can you weigh my garbage bin and have a computer that, you know, that we can go to the moon, come back?" And they said, "No, they can't weigh it." So, buddy next door has, you know, they jump up and down on it with their nine bags in there, and mine just got one, because I do recycle, so, yes, I have asked them, and I do believe when, when we saw the numbers in St. Albert, I think we have to have the will to do it, and it's possible. So, I appreciate the initiative of you taking it on your environmental committee to solve that.
Further questions, comments, debate? Counselor Rice?
So, Counselor Monroe, let me phrase this as a question, I feel like I'm on Jeopardy.
We're in discussion debate, you're...
What, have, has your environment committee ever considered or would they consider inviting Evergreen to come and address your committee, asking them if they have any incentive programs in any of the other communities they, they serve?
Counselor Monroe?
I might have to refer that to administration, but it looks like they're writing down the idea.
It just seems to me this was a company that was founded with a view of reducing waste, and so would be a perfect to come and address your committee.
I see no reason why, why they wouldn't, but once again, I would have to refer to administration.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe, Counselor Rice. Certainly, there are a range of options. The City of Grand Prairie has a waste reduction incentive in that in past history before the carts, we had a three-bag limit, and anything over that limit costed you, was, was an extra expense, and so maybe it's time to look at if we can provide that sort of financial disincentive for extra waste, which is also an incentive to reduce waste. So, I think there are options. I think just on Counselor Rice's point, I think we'd probably want to speak with Aqua Terra first since the contractor, Evergreen, works for Aqua Terra rather than for the city, so we may just want to, and as I mentioned with the delegation, if we want a certain level of service, we tell Aqua Terra to do it, and they figure out how much it'll cost and if they can do it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but Counselor Monroe's motion to refer to the appropriate committee, I don't see anybody else in the queue for any further discussion or debate, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and I believe that that dealt with all of the delegations. I believe our two final delegations were really on the same topic, and so that... Yeah, we can do that, I guess we have with the others, so motion received for information. Counselor Radburn?
I would move the, that the, sorry, I forget the lady's name, but we, we leave, receive a delegation's presentation for information.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate? Questions or comments on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. I believe that handled all of our delegation business. We had no notice of motion. I don't believe any council members had any reports from external agencies, boards and commissions, so we'll start with roundtable, and Counselor Monroe, you were the last, oh, Counselor Radburn, you were the last guy on the microphone, so we'll start with you tonight. We'll go over to Counselor McLean afterwards. Counselor Radburn?
Kevin? Thanks. Thank you, Mayor Given. January 10, 11, council planning session in Valley View. January 16, arts development meeting, and we had an annexation mediation information session, plus we had a mediator's meeting with the council negotiating team. January 17, council luncheon meeting with UDI, and this morning I had my quarterly meeting with our city manager. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As well, I attended January 10, 11, council retreat in the beautiful town of Valley View. We did an abstain in the Paradise Hotel, and actually quite beautiful, and you have the Shell gas station, brand new there, and the revitalization, you see some of Valley View, and I hope there's even more in the town of Valley View when they're downtown and over future years. So thank you to the town of Valley View for hosting us, and as well as MD Greenview, we sat in their chambers as well. As well, January 16, I had my quarterly meeting with city manager Greg, and all went well. It's kind of quick, because I think things are going pretty good, and so. As well, January 16, I attended the annexation, I believe that was the date, the mediation meeting with our council and county council, municipal affairs, and, you know, from what I've seen the process, I'm just hoping it gets over soon. It's been going on since I got on council. So, another event I went, and I'll just say, I went to the arts committee meeting, it's the first one I've ever gone to, I don't sit on that, that committee, but a good job, Counselor Monroe, for chairing it. It was a really action-packed meeting. Different grants being given out to Maple Sugar Festival, International Street Performers, it was, it was really unbelievable, and I was glad I sat in on it with everybody that was there. As well, January 17, I attended the meeting with Urban Developer Institute of GP. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Rice?
I attended the Canadian Home Builders and UDI housing tour, very interesting. I'll have a written report, it'll be handed in to the mayor's office in the next couple of days. I attended the luncheon with UDI, I think it's, one of the things on the tour was discussed is you got to quit building subdivisions and start building communities. So it was a very interesting subtle distinction. I attended a Utility Consumer Advocacy Board meeting, where of course, there's a lot of frustration and uncertainty as the province keeps responding to the regulated rate review in a piecemeal fashion and what it's ultimately going to mean for the average consumer. As I mentioned earlier, this evening met with the Plastics Recycling Association and, certainly learned a lot about the different grades of plastic and the different types of plastic and who's recycling what, and the frustrating and confusing marketplace that's out there right now in a, in an area that is growing and going to be with us for a long time, so rather interesting, so that's it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor Koken?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also was, January 10, 11, was at Valley View for our annual retreat. The facilitator, Dune Nguyen, he did a very good job, he brought some new ideas forward, and he, he questioned us, and anytime we, we sort of tended to go on and on, he wanted to make sure it was a shorter, concise idea. There wasn't anyone around the table that had that problem, but we, we did address it. On the 14th, I attended the funeral for Donna Tink. Now, I'm bringing this up because she was a great community builder, she sat on our library board, and she was also sat on the Friends of the Library, she was also the Grand Prairie Regional College Board, and she was nominated a Grand Prairie Town Hero in 2008. She was also appointed by our prime minister to the Federal Advisory Council on the Status of Women, so a great loss to, to our community and to Brian and the family. On the 16th, I attended the tender opening, and later on, the annexation meeting with municipal affairs and with our, our county council, and we had soup and sandwiches to keep the costs down. Thank you very much, Wayne and Everett. On the 17th, I also met with the Urban Development Institution at a noon luncheon, and they pointed out the city and development services need to work a little closer together, not to lose any businesses to our surrounding municipalities, and I think we've already moved forward on, on a few notes, on a few things that we can do to improve our relationships with our very respected and needed developers. And I believe we had consensus at that meeting from all of council that we don't want to lose any business in the City of Grand Prairie. That's it, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Koken. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also attended the council retreat, the annexation meetings as well, too. I was there for the lunch meeting with the UDI, and I also attended a Nighthawk Board meeting, and just wanted to pass on that things are looking pretty good over there, despite the cold weather that they had during the holiday season, they still managed to get a number of days open there and some pretty busy days. As well, they hosted a New Year's Eve party where their fireworks were not canceled. As well, they hosted a New Year's Eve party where their fireworks were not canceled and had a great turnout out there, so that's pretty good. One final thing with the Nighthawk, I'd encourage all of council on February ninth to come out to the sponsorship gala out there, and that's for all sponsors of the Nighthawk Recreation Area. You can come out and see the, what the hills like and where our dollars have gone to. On Friday, I attended the Big Brother's Ultimate Escape at the newly renovated Palmeroy Hotel, and I've got to say, it was a fantastic event. I'm not sure how much funds they've been able to, or they were able to raise, but in my estimation, it looked like things were going pretty darn high in the auction, so it looked like everyone was having a lot of fun and a great event. And today, I met with city manager Greg for my quarterly review, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilman Monroe. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I, too, attended the group of cheat in Valley View, and hats off to the town of, and the MD for looking after us, and good conversations and discussions. On the sixteenth, I met with my quarterly report with manager Greg, and also attended the annexation process. On the seventeenth, I did the UDI meeting at luncheon, and on the eighteenth, I attended the Big Brothers event as well. And I do have a small report from the library, if you don't mind. On the, it's not too late. On the eighth, I, we attended the Grand Prairie Library, and just some of the items of discussion were the bus terminal, the new library expansion project, space project. We discussed some of the stuff that were the library plans on doing for the hundredth anniversary activities. Just one more comment, we did the terms of reference review, introduced some new board members, and the new library director, Maureen Curry, attended her first meeting. And it was a good meeting. And just one more before I let go, the plans at the events for the library during the first Frost Move celebration are still on the go for this weekend. It's just that the Frost Move has been delayed till we get a little cooler weather, and we can make some ice out there so we can go skating. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole, and started with Councilor Redburn, I think, right? So we're all the way on, so I'll take my opportunity. On Wednesday the ninth, I had a meeting with representatives from Ferris LNG. They are constructing a new liquefied natural gas plant in the county of Grand Prairie. They're currently looking at evaluating a couple of different sites. Was just an opportunity to hear a little bit about the scope of the plant, a little bit about the technology, and was interested to hear that it may be in the future a product that we could use in some of our city equipment. There are communities that are looking at natural gas for their transit fleets. There are a couple of different types of, there's very cold natural gas, which I think is CNG, very cold natural gas, cryonic, I think. And then there's liquefied natural gas. They're doing the liquefied natural gas. Transit fleets typically run on the other version, but there may be opportunity in the future for us to use a peace country product here in City of Grand Prairie and some of our equipment. The product that they're going to be producing will be used as a diesel replacement in certain types of heavy-duty equipment. The example that they gave right now is a lot of drilling rigs, so things that are, as I understood, high horsepower where that's needed. So good to see that we're getting good use and more value-added use of the natural gas coming out of the ground from this region. I also, of course, was in attendance at the council retreat, appreciated council's efforts in planning our last nine or so months of our council term. I think we developed a very ambitious work plan, and it was a pleasure to work back, to look back on our strategic plan and see the amount of progress that had been made on the items. I think there was maybe one out of our focus areas or goals that hadn't been addressed, and I think that was pretty successful. So thanks very much to administration for helping us achieve that as well. I also attended the annexation mediation meetings and appreciated that approach, and look forward to working with the county of Grand Prairie. I also attended the Urban Developers Luncheon, and also that evening, I attended a meeting planning for the next breakfast with the boys. We met with coaches from local boys and men's sports teams to discuss how we could get their sports teams involved in the next breakfast with the boys and get their young men attending. And on Friday the eighteenth, I had the pleasure of attending at the Palmeroy Hotel to take part in the Queen's Diamond Jubilee presentations. I was a medal recipient, was nominated by the province, or somebody provincially, nominated by somebody, and it was a pleasure to be on stage with other people such as Tenille, who's been such a driving force behind the Big Hearts for Big Kids, Don Datchek from the college, and many others that you'd recognized from our community and from the Northwest Region. So I want to say my thanks for the nomination and for that recognition. And then on Sunday, January twentieth, I worked a split shift at Boston Pizza, busing. It is a fantastic place, Boston Pizza. But I was there in support of the Tomahawks basketball program. Boston Pizza had agreed to give a certain percentage of their food sales that evening to support the team, and my coach called and asked if I would be a celebrity server. It turned out that I was a celebrity dish buster. There was very little serving that went on, but I was really appreciative of Boston Pizza welcoming us in and supporting local high school sports like that. And then this morning, I was at Swan Even School at ten o'clock in the morning to take part in some of their Family Literacy Week activities, and I had the pleasure of reading two stories to the children. The first one, many members of council might know a story about Maurice Richard and his jersey. The children loved that, although I'm not sure they identified with how passionately the children in the story love Maurice Richard. But it was a pleasure to be there, and through the course of the week, I'll be at a number of other schools taking part in Family Literacy Week celebrations. I believe that was all that I had to report, and if that was everything, then we'll call our meeting adjourned.